I'm ready. Anya's ready.
Everybody ready remotely?
Thank you for asking.
Ah, we couldn't forget about you.
I appreciate everybody's flexibility and it's my daughter had a volleyball tournament. Thanks for letting me jump in.
No problem. With that being said, uh, welcome everybody. It's Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. It's 6:32. Welcome to the Warren Township High School District 121 School Board Meeting. Ms. Love, if we could start off with the roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Carlson?
Here.
Mr. Demonte?
Here.
Mrs. Martinez?
Here.
Mrs. Pope is absent. Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mrs. Squires?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, everyone. First on the agenda, as we always start off, is the Pledge of Allegiance. There's no flag in the room. I couldn't find one. Look at that.
Oh, boy.
I stand corrected. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to tonight's agenda?
I don't.
Not, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is our time for public comments. Nobody signed up, but it does not, um, bar anyone from addressing the board if you like to. I'll take a quick scan across. Everybody's here. I see lots of, I see a few heads shaking no, so we'll just move forward. Um, next up is the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes personnel recommendations per Exhibit A, numbers 99 through 105 as posted, and athletics activities and volunteer personnel recommendations per Exhibit B, numbers 44B through 53B as posted. The payment of bills dated February 14th, 2023, the amount of $1,467,108.70 and the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of January 17th, 2020.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Carlson.
Should those say 24?
I was gonna say this motion
It doesn't look
is not correct.
Okay, so we won't vote on it then?
If you would like, I can amend it and, and put it in for you.
Sure.
Can we amend the motion to vote on that?
I don't think we need to.
You can
No, if you can just add it and put it near the end and we'll do it before we leave then tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. All of a sudden I looked at the years on there. I'm like, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Okay. Excuse me. Next, I move for the Warren Township High School Board of Education to move into the Committee of the Whole for the purpose of this section of the meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Uh, Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. The first topic in the Committee of the Whole is a special education update.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. Um, this is a great opportunity for us to kind of go over the special ed audit, let you know the progress we're making and kind of what we're doing, what we've planned for the next couple of years. Ms. Garland and Ms. Gamash will take us through some of it, and I have a few parts too. And at any time, please ask questions if you have any, any need for clarification. Ms. Garland?
Okay, so you may have recalled, uh, through our special education audit, one of the recommendations that was provided was professional training and professional development for all of our staff. So this will be a district-wide initiative. So as we work through, um, to support all of our staff, our main focus will be on how to help to support our staff and to strengthen their skill sets and responding flexibly to our diverse student needs. So these are the four areas that we will be, uh, focusing for our professional training. So we will be strengthening our evidence-based instructional strategies, again, responding flexibly to student needs, increasing student engagement, and then improving partnerships between paraprofessionals and teachers. So this again will be a district-wide initiative that everybody will participate in.
The case management model and alignment of roles and responsibilities in the department was an additional consideration for us to address. It is recommended that we review our staffing model regarding case management, leadership, teachers, and paraprofessionals. Case managers manage the, the completion of the IEP, but more importantly, they support our students and parents. They facilitate meetings with the primary focus of ensuring that the decisions that are being made throughout this process are student-centered and individualized. Roles and responsibilities, allocation regards to our department leadership, how our staff members allocated to support student needs, and how our paraprofessionals utilize in the classroom were other areas that were identified within the recommendations.
This graph is kind of a, an illustration to kind of show you the different buckets or labels our students have inside special education. So this is the, a, a graph of the continuum of our least restrictive environment. On the left-hand side, the O1, that is, you know, the, the least restricted envi- where most of the services are provided in general education. And to the far right is the most restrictive environment, which would be a private therapeutic day school or some type of private school outside of Warren Township High School. And you can see where the percentages are in there. Um, this is just a snapshot of a one moment in time from the FY24 child count data. So this data is not static. It changes if a kid changes programs, changes courses or services. Obviously, those numbers shift a little bit. Our focus is to build, you know, systematic capacity as we proceed through this audit and through our different things we're looking into to be more inclusive in our general education programming. And we think we can do that specifically when you look at the yellow to the green. We think we can move kids out of the yellow into the green with co-teaching as just one strategy, getting more kids into the general education classroom, where there's a second teacher in a classroom to provide that support so those kids can handle that type of curriculum and that type of general education. Obviously, this is a process that takes time and training, and we need to continue to build capacity, but we believe we can do that. We will always have kids in all those buckets. That's never gonna change. You'll never see 100% on one end or 100% on the other. There's always gonna be a sprinkling throughout. But again, our focus initially, at least next year, is where we're really gonna try to get the yellow to the green to increase that number.
Can I ask a question about that slide? Is this continuum the sort of thing where there's some kind of sort of guideline, like a goal that we're trying to reach in terms of the distribution? Or is this just a, this is where we are now and we're looking for some progress in terms of movement to a less restrictive environment?
Yeah, that, that's why they, they set these and put kids into categories. So we look at it ourselves. You can also get audited by the State Board of Education to make sure you have a better balance and you're trying to move kids to the left, uh, depending on their disabilities and the services they need and what services you can offer at your school. But that's exactly why we're targeting that yellow to the green, because we think that's a very achievable statistic for us to get more kids into general education.
Great. But is there a percentage that we're looking to move into the green and the yellow? I mean, it says we're at 71%. Is the goal to get to 75, 85? I mean,
It's more, more green, more yellow to green, not to improve the percentage of the people farther right. That's not what he's talking about.
We're hoping more kids are in the green, so obviously the yellow would get smaller. Is there a specific number? I don't have a specific number, because every year, I mean, that's the point. Special education is individualized education plan, so it's very difficult to
Okay.
get held pinned down to a very specific percentage, but that is definitely the goal.
Is there a state standard or anything, anything we're shooting for?
Movement.
We want movement of blue to orange.
Correct.
That's what we want. That's what we want.
That is, that is correct. And, and that's gonna be addressed in our presentation.
Yes, I figured it would be.
Yes.
So on this note, real quick before we, um, move, the state does have some guidelines. We are within all of the guidelines. I don't know the percentages off the top of my head, but we have not been earmarked by the state of being in non-compliance for any of those areas. So we are within those recommended guidelines, if that helps.
If we were to get earmarked, what would be the result?
Um, they, they come in, they do, um, a deep dive audit. Uh, the district was identified. I wanna say it was back in like 2011. It, so it's, it's been a number of years since we've rectified.
In 2011, we went through the data and we had to go down and we met with the state, we had to show all our numbers and then show what we were doing in special education. And at that point, we collapsed sections in the yellow and pushed more kids to the green at that point when that happened.
Yeah, so currently we were, are within the recommended targets, so.
Go to the next slide, please. Um, the book Reimagining Special Education guided our committee work. Uh, we began in January with a small group of administrators. We then asked our lead teachers, co-teachers, special education teachers, case managers, and building and district administrators if they were interested in joining the larger committee. Due to the overwhelming amount of interest, we created two subcommittees. Instructional Practices and Service Delivery Committee focused on what we teach and how we teach, as well as building our paraprofessional capacity to support students. The co-teaching committee explored and discussed the implementation of various models of co-teaching methodology and practices. Um, each committee identified targeted areas of professional training for the coming school year. Next slide, please. So now what? So our future steps. Okay, so as I mentioned in our first slide, our first area of priority will be to provide training for all staff. As I shared, it'll be a district-wide initiative, and our main focus right now will be on the responding, uh, to students' individual needs and how our staff are able to respond flexibly to that. Our second point here is to finalize those shared expectations for co-teachers, which we're classifying as a little bit more of a short-term goal. Um, as a result of our committee work, we identified that further attention is needed to create those shared expectations and common experiences for our co-teaching staff. So additional training is going to be provided in that area. The third one is to make a decision for our case management model. We currently have four case managers. Yosanya talked briefly about what those roles and responsibilities are. Case management will always be a responsibility for our special education department. It's not going away. It will always be there. Um, so the audit specifically recommended that we consider other models, and our goal will be to have a decision for FY26. Okay, the fourth area was to introduce, um, any additional service delivery models. Uh, we've engaged in a preliminary review of various service delivery models, and as we continue to explore those alternate models, uh, we want to expand our service delivery, excuse me, support for students' families, um, and staff. So when we're looking, um, specifically for that right now, we're looking to help to bring our services and our support to students rather than having our students come to us. So just kind of working on some of that, uh, philosophical and methodo- methodology pieces. And then our fifth one, meeting is gonna end in 10 minutes though, Brandon. There we go. Adding specialized programming. So this was specifically focused, or this will specifically focus on building our capacity to support our students with more significant needs that are currently being supported in learning environments that are off-campus. So just to note that this may require some staffing allocations, um, facilities, things along those lines, maybe some changes in leadership as well. Um, this is gonna be a really happy lift for this district and our department and all of our, um, staff and families. Um, so our implementation and our process is going to need to be very deliberate. Uh, we're gonna begin this work by providing the additional co-teaching training that was referenced a couple of times to really broaden the scope of the students that we're able to support within the general education learning environment. What questions might you have?
Give brief.
Can I ask a couple?
Yeah, sure.
Couple of questions real quick, Karen.
Yeah.
Can you talk through a little bit, uh, just two things for me? I'm gonna slide this up. Um, can we just revisit what a co- what the benefit of a co-teaching model is and what that looks like and what that feels like from a student perspective? And then if you have examples of any other service delivery models that we might be investigating in the future?
Um, so currently, right now, our co-taught model is where we have a certified general education teacher as well as a certified special education teacher helping to support all students who are in the classroom. They co-plan. Uh, they have that built into their schedule where they help to support delivery instruction, methodology, planning, any accommodations, modifications that may be necessary. I would hope that from a student lens, they see two equal teachers who are there to help to support everybody. Um, so it's something that, it's a model that we've been running here for, I'm gonna
2012 after the last
2012. Um, so I feel like we have got, I'm gonna try to think here real quick. Eight, nine, 11, 12-ish co-teaching teams throughout the district, so we're pretty proud of our work in those areas. So always looking to expand it for sure. Um, a lot of our teams have been partners for quite some time, so they've kind of worked out those kinks. Um, anytime you start a new partnership, right, it takes some time to get used to things and, um, we've got a lot of little veteran partners, so we're excited about that. Um, some additional, uh, service delivery models, um, as part of that book, uh, that was mentioned, the Reimagining Special Education, um, there were three models that we kind of took a deeper dive, um, co-teaching being one of them. Um, but there's also other models, um, that would include more of a consultative model as well as a facilitation model. So there's varying levels of student support within each one of those models, but I think one thing that we need to be really mindful on is we explore some different ways to help to support, um, our students is we're also being mindful on how we're gonna support our staff. Um, so we need to make sure that we are providing the professional development and the opportunity for collaboration, um, on, on a pretty large scale. Um, a lot of our, a lot of our supports right now are outside of that general education environment, so that's why when I mentioned that this is gonna have to be deliberate and very purposeful on how we do our training. But with either one of those models, it's gonna require a substantial amount of professional training in those areas. Did I answer your questions?
Yes, thank you very much.
Sure.
Could you tell me how you came across the timeframes? Is that degree of difficulty or money or what?
Sorry, can you say?
Well, you talk, say somebody's gonna take three to four years or one to two years or whatever. How did you come across some of those timeframes? Is that degree of difficulty or is it money or both or either or what?
I think it's a combination of a lot, and anybody else, feel free to jump in. I think from my lens, immediately is the support level and the professional training that we're gonna need to do uh, with our staff as well as our community. Um, for some of these, it's, uh, very large district-wide shifts that we need to make sure that we have a communication plan, a professional development and training plan, as well as what our staffing plan's gonna look like to help to support that. So our longest one here that we've identified is that service delivery model, as well as that specialized programming with the amount of professional development and funding.
Then forgive me, as this goes on, you're gonna come to us, Danny, you're gonna come to us to fund this or, forgive my ignorance, how's this, how does this work?
Yeah, yeah, probably the first time that we're gonna be looking at possible funding or staffing decisions, Karen, tell me if I'm wrong, is number three there for the case management model, because that's when we'll start to shuffle around who's doing what in a different way. But Karen, tell me if that's
I would agree. I would agree with that. I think that would be the first time that we're really looking at kind of realigning those roles and responsibilities, but that's gonna take some time to really do our due diligence to make sure that we're providing still that same level of service for our students and the individualized experience. Be a lot of training that would, if we were to change our case management model, that would have to involve a lot of professional development and training as well for the staff that who haven't been in that case management role for a number of years too, so.
The way I think about this is, uh, there's kind of three buckets that when CUC did their assessment, they alluded to and said, when you look at staffing, there's three possible areas you might have to, you might think about different levels of staffing. It could be more, it could be less. One was what's going on in the classroom, so that could be teachers, teachers or paraprofessionals. One is how are you doing case management? And those two probably fit together right now. For the most part, staff that are doing case management are not in the classroom. Um, so those, you know, who's in the classroom and who's providing case management services? That's probably together happening. Those conversations are happening at the same time. And, um, staffing in the classroom would be a discussion for service delivery models. And then they had this third bucket, which was administrators, and they did say that the management of the special ed, uh, program here at the district is probably understaffed from a management perspective. So that's something that, those are probably the three buckets that we might need or might come and ask for some thoughts on staffing to the board in the future.
The only other thing I'd add to respond to you, Steve, is four and five, well, mo- mostly five. There's also facility considerations. Depending on the type of programs you're running, you have to have the space and they have the ability to do it. To give you an example, it may be to be easier to understand, at Oak Plain, we wanted to expand some of our ALS programming and transition programming. There's one classroom available on the first floor. That's a struggle. Like, we, we can't have, it, it's really difficult to get certain programs to the second floor. So those, those are some of the things we have to think through and plan through, and sometimes that takes time besides staffing. The other part, the good news is, as we see this student decline or population decline, we also may have flexibility inside of our own staff for some reallocations. So that timing might work out nicely for some of those programs as well. But it is also a challenge. Again, specialized programming, you're hiring specialized people to come in and provide some services, and sometimes that's a tall task to find those individuals to work for your organization.
Plus, we're bringing students back from outsourcing, which is very expensive as well. If, that's in number five as well.
That's correct. That's correct.
So theoretically, whatever that costs you, hopefully it's less than what you're already paying. I mean, that's the theory, I think. And, and hopefully they get better services, which I don't think they're getting bad service now, but they're just here with the rest of the students, which is better for them, educationally speaking.
I would be curious also if Tony has anything to add since he's really connected to the co-op and probably understands, um, at a, at a deeper level than most of our board members, how that's interplaced with the co-op and we, the students that we currently have at, uh, CDAL. I don't know if Tony has any thoughts as we go through the slides.
It's the right direction ahead. Programming at CDAL is becoming more and more difficult to get our kids into. One, two, there's an argument that quality of programming there is, is not the same as it has been in previous years. But, so I, I do think we need to plan for that and adjust for that, but most importantly, to me, the, the right side of the continuum and moving that over or number five is the biggest benefit, not so much from a cost standpoint, but yes, you are right. There is a massive cost to placing kids outside of our district, not just in tuition, but transportation and a variety of other factors. It's an insane amount that it goes toward that. And we have, I would argue, based on my knowledge, quite a few more kids than most high school districts outplaced. But more important than that is keeping kids within their home school, their community, their friendship group, connected to kids that they may in the summer go and attend WSRA, the Warren Special Recreation Programming, or other, just keeping kids in their neighborhood and not feeling as if they're gone. And I know those schools become their own community, but because kids come from all different areas, when they go home, that connection sometimes breaks, so they feel isolated and the families don't always feel connected. So I do think, oh, the free meeting.
Yeah.
Someone didn't pop for a, hey, we passed the referendum. You can get a pro account if you want. Danny, do we want Danny to connect in? Probably. He's what? All right, I'll hang tight. No, that's good. It's the free account. It's like 40 minutes they give you. You guys not like Google meets anymore? Yeah.
Online learning, so, so.
He just pasted the invite information into Notepad. That's always, he's probably just gonna email Danny the meeting ID and passcode. Although Brandon said an invite already went out to him too.
I'm back in. Give me a second. Put the slides back up.
We'll stop talking about you now.
Yeah.
Brandon, you're gonna have to enable screen sharing for me to get the slides back up. Sorry, everybody. Thanks for your patience.
Dr. Danny's back.
Yeah, I'll keep going. Danny, you can hear, right?
Get a second here.
All right, then I'll keep going. I guess my point is I'm mostly excited about this from a kid's standpoint and getting those kids back into the community. I know, I can only guess how we got to this point, funding, um, is how I think we got here. I know staffing can be a challenge as well. But a staffing is a challenge everywhere, and that doesn't explain our, uh, our numbers as high as maybe neighboring districts. So now that the funding part is fixed, I, this is definitely the right direction to go is to bring kids back. It's also good for our gen ed kids to learn, to interact with all types of neurodiverse students and not, eh, so it's, it's kind of a crime when we pull certain segments of our student population out and then not expose our kids to them as well. So I think there's a couple of different areas where we benefit and win from this. But yes, I think CDAL, massive question mark and has been for a few years and the future of it. People continue to want to leave, and there was a district that just petitioned again to leave. Getting our kids back. The key now is gonna be the internal shift in mindset of our teachers, because they've been, you know, the, having kids, it's gonna be different, because the pers- you don't want them to perceive it as their kids or these are someone else's kids, that they're, no, they're your kids, and we're gonna learn together and how to teach everyone together. And so I think that's gonna be the challenge. Um, it's a good challenge to take on. I know it will be a hard challenge for you all, so I recognize that.
Well, there may be more staff.
100% there will be more staff, but it's a good challenge to take on.
Maybe why are, we've sent more kids out too, simply because it's just easier.
I, and I've heard through the community through the years, even before becoming on board, that, yeah, there just has been a lack of staffing to even answer some questions or it, whatever it is, we're on the right path to, to making it right for all kinds of reasons, including financial. I don't wanna, you know, there is a piece there too. But, um, that's the insight I have. I think it's good. Um, doing it carefully, I think, is good. Um, I'm always, if, you know, I would love to see it sooner, but at the same time, I get the capacity piece. Couple of things in, as I was thinking about and seeing your timeline though, um, introduce, the words introduce and add, is that when the programming would go live or when you're introducing the concept to our staff? Yeah, like four and five.
Four and five.
Um, so introduce any additional service delivery models, three to four years? When you say introduce, I'm just getting clarity here. Is that introduced to the staff or like where the programming is going live?
I think it would probably depend on where our work that leads up to that, to be quite, if I'm gonna be just really honest with you. I would love to see a full implementation, right, of where we're at with that, but it might be still systematically, you know, in specific areas, maybe within specific departments or, you know, particular subject areas as we start to broaden that out. Do I think that we will be at a full overhaul in terms of our service delivery model within the next three years? I think that that's a very lofty goal. But I definitely think that we will have improvements and small changes in those areas within the next
And two other things pop to mind. One is some of the construction that might be needed for classrooms. Yes, we have a student population decline, but we're also on this other side, just talking about doing construction work, and we probably wanna keep in mind if there's thoughts three, four years ahead that you're not ready to tell us, but probably need to be vocalized to stop or change the direction of other construction that's going on. That might make sense to be brave and speak up and say, because we, we can't be talking a pool and the same time we're talking about I, I'm just saying that. Am I, did I actually hit upon a real topic?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I think it's one of those things where I know we want it all, but we need to be mindful of when we talk to architects and start talking to stuff, we have to have this other stuff in mind. And then the third piece that I was thinking of while I was sitting here is if it's hard when you look at those 30, 40 kids that might be coming back to us, let's say, that's just a, that's a me number that I think, yeah. But, you know, you're gonna maybe start to group them programma- programm- grammatically, yeah, thank you, thank you. I'm assuming you're also talking to like neighboring districts. I'm assuming you're also talking to like neighboring districts as well because if there's a onesie or twosie that's over at Grace Lake North or Central somewhere else that might make a program whole, you know, and we're investing facilities and administrators and teachers and paras, that might help. So the, I don't wanna lose sight the thought of, you know, having a flexible mindset to having other students from other districts maybe come to make a, a program whole 'cause ultimately, our kids win 'cause they're back here. Those kids may win 'cause they're not being sent three hundred miles away, so. Anyway, those are my three kind of thoughts as I was thinking through.
Tony, I appreciate your thoughts. One word that you used that really resonated when you talked about diversity. As a parent, I always thought our diversity at Warren was one of our strengths, but we don't really include these kids in part of our diversity. They're just kind of out there, so bringing them back in, I think, would really strengthen everyone. Very much. Yeah, thank you. Carol, the one bullet point you said, provide training for all staff in the short term. Can you just, a few more details on that? I know it's early on, just out of curiosity, 'cause I could see you getting a lot of, I know you'll get a lot of pushback from a lot of teachers that, this sounds great, don't disrupt my classroom.
So I, I feel confident in the approach that we are taking to help to support all of our staff in this, with this work, that we are not hyper focusing to say, here is a list of strategies that will be beneficial for your students with identified special education. How are we supporting all of our students? And how are we responding flexibly to their individual needs? So whether or not they have been identified as students with special education needs, whether or not they have English language needs, whether or not they have, you know, 504s or whether, you know, I'm sorry, like a general education accommodation plan, or whether or not they just need some supports just in general on that given day. So we're really trying to build the capacity of our staff to be able to respond flexibly in the moment for all of our students.
Yeah, that helps. Thank you.
Potentially, it's not a special ed initiative. It is a school-wide initiative to satisfy our diverse learners in all capacities.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I like how you phrase that, diverse learners.
Do you anticipate parent pushback? So I'm gonna, again, focus on the ones that, because there's a misperception that because they got their kid into this super specialized school that's perfect for them and they got the district to fund it and all that, that they will now push back and fight us on kids returning and what do we do in that kind of instance?
And there's always.
They're broadcasting theoretically.
So there's always service, like our families always have questions about the services and the supports that we can provide here on campus. So I would anticipate that parents would have more questions. Our parents are great advocates for their children, right? That's what their job is. That's their role, right? So we just, we always partner with it. We always listen and we make sure that we're making the best decisions. But to your point, right, we have some families who have been at an off-campus level of support. It's in second, third grade and they're leery about returning back to a big high school. We get that a lot, right? How is the big high school gonna help to support? So we really just need to kind of work through those, but I would.
There may be a year or two where we possibly have some higher legal bills or going to due process or something like that, but.
Never a goal, right?
No, no, but it is a reality of, and I, and I do say it's many times mistaken. We can provide equal, if not better, education here, but a lot of the schools have, especially the private ones that are tuition-based, have done a great job at saying how great they are, so.
But I do think it's important for you guys to know, too, as a collective hall, that we bring students back regularly. We, we engage in that IEP process and that conversation. So this is something that we do on a very regular basis and we start a lot of the times, and feel free to jump in, with partial transitions, you know, proportions of the day, things along those lines. So we engage in that conversation at every single annual, or every meeting a student has a, we, we meet on every student a minimum of one year, right, or once a year. So during that meeting, we are always engaging in those conversations. We have students who are returning back full-time for this coming year.
Yep.
Right? So I mean, it does happen on a, on a regular basis, not at a rate where sometimes our percentages, right, on that pop screen is noticeable, but for individual students, we engage in that conversation regularly.
Related to that, could you tell us like what percentage of the twenty percent stay twenty percent? Or, I mean, how much, how much interaction is there between these four categories?
Movement.
So I'm trying to think here the best way to capture that for you. So you can see, Brandon, can you get rid of that little pop-up screen that came up?
Says let people hear you better.
Sorry, I need to get, I'm naturally just loud, so I don't have.
Can't see it.
There we go.
There it is.
Okay. So you will see, I don't know if you can see, but there's those percentages, like forty, just like if you, if you focus on the yellow, you'll see the forty to seventy-nine percent. That's a pretty big range, right? So when we start to see students who, let's just say, for example, are in special education learning environments for English, math, science, and social studies, okay? I, I hope this is getting to your, I hope I'm answering your question. If not, redirect me. But sometimes we'll have students who are receiving specialized services in a separate location for all four of those subject areas. Sometimes when we move a student back into the general education, receive those services there, that might be one class. That change in percentage is not great enough to move from yellow to green. We need to make more changes for services in the general education to see that percentage reflect a change in color, if that makes sense. So it's difficult for me to be able to answer for you to say, what do we have to do? Like, what's the very specific, concrete thing that we need to do to get more yellow into green? Because it varies for each individual student. For some students, it might be one more learning opportunity in a general education class. For another student, it might be four. So it kind of depends on where they fall within that spectrum of what those services is at.
The answer is not very much.
There wasn't like, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
My question is, how, how many kids stay in that blue the whole time?
Most.
It, it, I would say it's a higher number than I'd like to, to, I don't have an exact number, but I think it's also important, too, is that not all of those students always start in blue. Right? Sometimes there's a situation where they might be in a different category because of the level of need has just gotten too great than what we can provide here. They need to move to blue sophomore or junior year. Sometimes we have students who start in blue freshman and sophomore year and then they no longer need that level of service for junior year. So I would say that a lot of students do require that service for all four years, but we do have a fair amount of students that fluctuate in between as well throughout the years.
You could have a student in green that is in blue due to one incident.
Correct.
On campus.
Have a student that's not even in one of those categories.
Correct.
And go to blue because of a situation.
Yes.
So it really does vary. Sorry if I can't be more specific.
That is specific. That is what it is.
Any other questions you might have for us?
Thank you for your work on this.
We're excited.
I'm glad to see this moving.
Yeah, keep us involved and let us know how we can help support you. Absolutely, please.
Thank you.
We can't hear him.
Can't hear you. Christian over there.
Can you hear us, Danny?
You say language.
He reminds me of all my teachers during remote learning.
He's muted.
He's not muted. It might be something with our sound system? No, that's us muted. That's not him. I'm not muted.
Yeah, you can just do that. Just type what you want. Just type when you wanna talk, Danny.
Danny, you wanna call my cellphone and I can put it on speakerphone into the microphone? Just to save some time.
I feel like you said, sure, I can do that.
Can you hear me now?
Try talking to us. Brandon thinks she might be fixed.
Hey! Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
We can hear you now, too, so.
Maybe you did just work.
Thank you, Brandon. Brandon's doing a lot of extra work because of me. I appreciate you, Brandon. So I'm just gonna take a moment to introduce the graduation requirement conversation and I am just interested in continuing conversation with the school board about some of their perspectives and their values around the graduation requirements. Just as a bit of history, excuse me, to review a couple of highlights that were in the pack. It's the board packet. Our graduation requirements had been significantly higher than they are now. And then when the pandemic hit, the state made some changes to the graduation requirements for state, the entire state. For the most part, that gave seniors opportunity to not be negatively impacted by the pandemic. So we, along with every other high school, dropped our graduation requirements, basically down to the state minimum at that point. And then year after that, when we, we decided, we made conscious to supplement to keep the graduation requirements lower, we were facing the possibility of not passing a referendum and having to change the number of periods we have in a day. So we have since passed the referendum, we kept our length of our day, but our graduation requirements are, are still lower than they were five or six years ago. They're eighteen and a half. And the topic came up in our strategic planning that I promised our staff, included the strategic plan proposal, that we would talk about this, this year, which we've been doing. So we have a, a small ad hoc committee that's reviewing graduation requirements. It includes four staff members and four administrators. We're probably met twice, probably gonna meet two or three more times once school starts back up, but I thought it'd be a good chance today to just keep the conversation going at the school board level. The school board is the entity that would make graduation requirement meetings. In most situations, you're doing that after the superintendent gives you a recommendation. So, and generally, that would happen late fall when we're approving courses for the course guide. So just to review some of the data that is in your packet, generally, right now, students have eighty less elective requirements. Electives are really only that were impacted by the graduation requirements. Even with the decreased graduation requirements, about half of our students are pretty, pretty, they're taking twenty-five and a half or more credits. Eighty percent of our students are still taking two and a half credits or more. Of most, our students have a similar experience because we will pass the referendum and still taking as many classes as they were six years ago. We do have more students taking study halls. We looked at all of them specifically, and the numbers that are leaving school early or taking the study hall period at the end of the day is about this double really over the last handful of years. Our graduation rates for ninth have been consistent. Ninth grade on track rates have decreased. In a bit of context, in four years, incoming ninth grade students will be required to take two years of the rural language class. Most school districts probably are going to take that out of their elective credits. So if they're requiring eleven elective credit, for example, they'll take that rural language requirement and separate it out from the referendums. We don't have enough space to do that in our elective requirements. So we will have to make some type of change here, at least in the next four years. So I don't know if any school board members had questions about any of the data that were in the board packet, but some things that might pop some converses today, and again, I'm just looking for some overall thoughts and perspectives on where board members are. I've got a couple of question prompts up here to consider. The first one is how far above and beyond state minimum requirements do we want our requirements to be at one? How do we want our requirements to compare to other school districts? And we've talked a lot about internships, but in the opportunities, are there other types of high school experiences we should consider requiring in the future? So I'll just turn the mic over to the school board just we, I'm just curious on any conversation or thoughts that you have around this.
Danny, one of my first questions is what you have with number two. And how do we currently compare to surrounding school districts?
Yeah, so right now, we are probably, we are the lowest of our comparable districts. At eighteen and a half, most school districts are somewhere between twenty, sorry, they're around twenty probably. When we were at twenty-two and a half, we were one of the higher districts, if not the highest district. So we can't go from the, the most stringent requirements to the least stringent requirements.
Okay, so, but the, the delta between us and the nearby schools, it's not that great. I mean, it's, it's a little bit, but it's not as much as it, I, I would thought it was. Okay. The, the other thing that kind of tweaked my interest a little bit, I mean, we say, you know, less credits to, to graduate, but we're still struggling with the ninth graders on track. That, those percentages have gone down a little bit. It just seemed to me, maybe we can use that, I don't wanna say free time, but those open periods in the classroom to help out that group of students even more, other than just providing resources, but maybe requiring them to attend resources and help them get back on track. To me, for a lot of our students, that'd be a better use of their time than taking some elective that's really gonna not lead to anything in their, their future life.
I appreciate that. I think that, I think there's a lot of people that are having some of the same thoughts also. I appreciate that.
Some things in the plan that I really liked were the idea of making ninth grade not the heaviest year in the four years and distributing things more evenly. And then to have a minimum annual course load seemed like a good way to address the problem of, you know, students taking so many study halls that it feels like it's taking away from other things. I don't, I don't think I have a strong opinion about what our minimum requirements are in relation to other school districts. What I, what I'm interested in is that we make use of whatever we do. So if we have lower, you know, requirements to graduate, I want us to use that to do something, not just have lower requirements and that's it.
Two question.
Can you say, can you look at a little bit more student, so we say do something.
I want there to be a, a purpose, like we use that flexibility to, to serve all the students. Because it seems to me like there's a certain segment of our student population that it doesn't matter what our minimum requirements are because they're, they're motivated by something else, like whatever their plans are for college, right?
Eighty percent.
So, so our minimum requirements probably influence the experience of kids who are not as motivated beyond high school. And so how do we use, if we're gonna do that, how do we use that flexibility to, to maximize the educational experience that, that portion of our student population is having?
Two, two questions unrelated, or maybe unrelated. Do graduation requirements affect overall performance of a school? I mean, it, it, I don't know how to put that. Is it school a higher equality result because of graduation requirements? Is there correlation? That's one question, and the other is in terms of electives. When I remember back in the dark ages, when I was in high school, I took electives that I was interested in. Therefore, I got better grades in those electives. I mean, wouldn't that affect other things, too? I don't know how to put that.
Yeah, I, I think I, I'll try to answer, see if you can come back and tell me what parts I missed. So generally, we do believe that if students are in more of our classes, their, their capacity is going to increase. So I don't, I don't know offhand of any like scientific studies that specifically correlate the number of graduation requirements to do success. But generally, if students are more active, they're taking classes, they are taking advanced classes or figuring out how to support them to move up and they're making, how cool will perform better. At a student level, taking more classes can help them if they're the right classes. Let's see. I forget your second question.
I, I guess with the electives, it seems to me, particularly for those college-bound, if they're taking classes that they're interested in, they're going to do better, I would think, I would think, which would increase their GPA, which increased, you know, which would increase their GPA, which increase, you know, whatever. I, I just, I'm not sure what the question is there, but I, I'm, I'm.
I think the students that wanna go to college are taking electives.
Okay.
The students that aren't taking all the electives and taking study halls usually are the ones who aren't on track. So the question is, do you require more electives of them just to keep them in classes? Or require them to do something else besides take a standard elective that will enhance whatever they may wanna do in the future, whatever that is? And is, is, is the solution there to increase the scope of the electives and go back to internships and that sort of thing? Give them other choices?
One of the considerations, certainly.
Yeah, I think that's one of the considerations. Right now, part of the struggle that we're having is that, um, there are so many more, just, I would call them distractions from, uh, for students. When the student's considering like, hey, do I wanna be an A plus student? Um, today, there's a whole list of things that they're measuring that up against. And so the excitement for students to be engaged in classes, if they don't have a specific plan after high school or their plan does not include college, is really tough right now for us. Colleges, college, if the students haven't gone to college, the kids are looking at those requirements, those expectations of the colleges right now, but if they're not interested in going to college, it's, there's no motivation to take extra levels right now.
So Danny, I got a, a question that may not have an answer, and then just a comment. And reading to some of the teachers and admin stories, I think a couple of them kind of alluded to that the more credits that are required to graduate correlates into a better high school.
That's where it was going.
Yeah, does that, is there any foundation to that? Just because you have to have more credits to graduate, it's a, and I don't know how you define a better high school.
I think that's a perception though. There doesn't have to be a correlation. They're talking about the perception that if we require eighteen and a half and somebody else requires twenty-two, you're getting a better education. They don't know that eighty percent of our students are taking twenty, or fifty are taking twenty-five and blah, 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 so.
So then a, another comment from a parent's perspective, you know, some of the, the stories and stuff we're talking about, you know, kids need a full schedule, otherwise they get sidetracked and misled and other things. And I agree, my kids, we brought them up, you've got to keep busy. But, you know, it wasn't that long ago there in high school, but I think about, it wasn't a term at the time, their mental health. They're taking elective classes, and yet they're still staying up till one o'clock in the morning to study and getting up at five o'clock in the morning and go back to school. If they had the option to take one less, pardon the expression, meaningless elective class, they can focus on the more important classes, maybe focus on rest and mental health a little bit better.
Can I just add though, that typically elective classes don't give much homework? You do, from what I've seen, and I've taken several elective classes, it's that the standard is that you should finish your work in class and they give you plenty of time to finish your work in class. And if you don't finish it, they tend to give more time as well for those students who have not finished, uh, rather than those harder classes, which are the ones you're typically staying up till one AM completing work for. So if you stay on top of your work, given the time in class, theoretically, you shouldn't have much work to do outside of class for elective specifically.
Are you saying my kids were slow, that they had to study?
Oh, absolutely not, absolutely not.
No, I understand that perspective completely.
Right.
But on the other hand, they could take that class period and study for AP push, AP something else instead.
So, so a lot of students who, from my perspective, uh, my close group of friends are those kids who are taking all those AP classes, and they tend to take study halls to actually study. So I see the point, I understand your guys' perspective when it comes to study halls being just a block of time where they're not doing something and they could fill that with something else to become a more well-rounded student.
Yeah.
But I think there are also a lot of students who take it because they do need that extra time in school to just focus on their studies and get assignments done and all those sorts of things. So I understand both perspectives, but I feel like we should maybe expand the view that students who take, uh, study halls are only students who don't wanna do anything, rather than students who need that time to complete assignments so that they're not staying up really late completing them.
And now I'm gonna talk out of the other side, um, I'm a big fan of electives too, cause it did introduce my kids to a lot of things that they took as they had to fill it with something and they ended up being interesting. Ah, go figure.
Yeah, I think that electives definitely make a more well-rounded student. I mean, there are a lot of classes that my friends and I have taken that we didn't think we'd find interest in, but we just wanted to take them to try it out and we ended up really liking it. So I do, I do like the thought of increasing minimum requirements to match those other schools, even if it's by a credit and a half. That credit and a half may be someone's, you know, future, their passion that they might not discover unless they were required to take that class, so.
I actually did talk to some of my kids on this. One of their perspectives was by mom and dad forcing them to take electives, it may force them to realize, look into other avenues that you may not be interested in. Wow, it opened up my eyes, so next time something comes along, I'm a little open, more open-minded.
I completely agree with that view. Yep.
I think I've got all their perspectives in here, so.
So one of the things that you'd mentioned was the possibility of like a freshman orientation, sort of a welcome to high school class, or a career pathways exploration. Would those, uh, the way that you're imagining them now be, um, sort of things you need to accomplish, but they're not associated with credits or?
Yeah, I have a question. A lot of high schools will have some type of freshman onboarding class. Maybe that involves some career exploration. And, uh, many times that class is just, all freshmen have to take it, but they're not required to pass it. So if you for some reason struggle with it, we're not holding it over your head to graduate. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, because if we were doing that, then that would be relevant to how many credits are we asking kids to?
Correct.
I, um, this is a little bit of different tack on this, but, I mean, I'm okay if we raise it to twenty or leave it at eighteen and a half. I'm okay either way. The thing that I've, that jumped out at me out of the data that Danny gave us in our board packet was that some of the teachers felt we were disrespecting them by not having more requirements. And I, I just don't under, I don't under, I can't grasp that, why they would think we are disrespecting them. I don't, I don't understand.
I don't think that it's, I don't think it's disrespect. I, I understand that, but I feel like maybe it's more of school culture where you're not as a high performing school versus your neighboring school because that's how I, that's how I look at it and as someone who also works at a school.
Respect their classes, is what it said.
Yeah, I mean.
They teach the electives you're talking about.
Again, I'm not, I'm not saying, we don't disrespect them, by the way. I don't, at least.
No.
And I don't think anybody here does, but I just thought it was interesting that the graduation requirements caused them to feel that way. Or did they always feel that way? I don't, I don't know. I don't.
Have they given you more insight to what that statement is?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't think that, um, the initial change in the graduation requirements felt offensive to staff. I think they understood it was either related to the pandemic or it was related to the referendum. Uh, but some of them do feel like not changing it back has shown that some community members don't value, or stakeholders don't value the courses that they teach. And so John gave you this question ahead of time, so I could prep a little bit. Well, I was thinking about it today, the analogy I had was, I came up with was, uh, like at home when we're making dinner for the kids, if I or my wife, who makes better food than me, like if we're putting a lot of time into dinner, we have a beautiful dinner, and then our kids just decide they don't wanna eat it. There's some part of me that's like, oh, I put all this time into making dinner. Uh, this is my creation, it's my baby, I want them to enjoy everything that they would enjoy. And some of our teachers and some of the staff feel, I think, that of the courses that they created, that students now don't have to take, I don't know if that helps.
So is there any, other than anecdotally anecdotal feelings, are, are some of the electives have much lower attendance than they had before? As classes, I mean, are they, are the class sizes in electives going down? I don't know, I'm, I'm just asking.
Yeah, we did, we did run that, and I, I'm gonna, I would guess the answer right now.
Okay, well, we can talk about that again later, but yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get that data more specific and consider it more, but generally there is less enrollment in classes overall. The enrollment in some of the classes is being replaced by more students are taking a study hall or they're reading early. So there is a decline overall in the number of seats in classes.
Danny, this might be a question more, more geared towards geo, but, I mean, kids' interests change with time. So the electives I took in high school back a hundred years ago, my interests are probably very different from the kids now. Are we keeping up with our electives to make sure they're current on what our kids really want to be doing with their electives? Or some of the classes are declining is cause kids just aren't that interested in it anymore?
Yeah, we, I, the, um, did, um, with students this year to help us understand what type of courses they would be interested in. Um, I, we decided when we looked at that data that we need to do it a different way, so it can, it's a little bit more actionable. We are trying to figure out better ways to get student voices in that process.
Danny, if I could put you on the spot here, I'm looking at the last, uh, the bottom of the page that you submitted to us, and you say no action is needed at this time. And that you're gonna continue to meet, uh, why did you put that there?
Mostly we didn't do a priori, thinking about, asking, making decisions today. Um, and any of this is a really complex topic, so it's good to just keep coming to every few months, touching base on, uh, letting you know wherever the committee, letting you know what some of the ideas are that are on the table.
So you're, you're just referring to today?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I misinterpreted that, I, okay.
One thing I like, I don't wanna drag this out too, too much longer, but, uh, the one thing I think is interesting is it didn't change our graduation rate at all. We didn't graduate more people, so we didn't, it's the, the number is the same. So I don't think raising it is gonna necessarily penalize anyone. But I like the idea, if we do raise it, we make sure we do things that are new and interesting and helping students, if we're gonna require them to take another class, let's make sure we have something for the twenty percent that means something to them, that helps them in some way.
Right, rather than Rick or Roman history, we want to fix a car.
I'll build on that a little bit. Um, I do not support raising the amount of credits purely for the sake of raising the amount of credits. And what I see here is opportunity. I, maybe I'm looking at this different. We're in a unique point where we have flexibility that other schools will have to cut programs, cut requirements, will impact electives and departments and all that. And we're, we've, because of where we're at, we're, it, we're already beyond that. So what I would encourage is to think about this a, a little more create creatively. So I recognize the CTE programming that's coming down the road. We may put requirements back and then have to pull them back again, that doesn't feel good. There, the language difference, uh, requirements that, I don't know how that'll impact things. What I, so the thing I was gonna throw in there is, um, I, I would love to see us think about doing things differently. Like we're, we're funded now, we, we, the creativity aspect that I see some other schools doing, and, and it's not directly related to this, but it always fascinates me. Like the Glenn Brooks putting in a health center and, um, having advocates staff it, and they don't exclude anyone. Um, I've heard of multiple high schools looping their, uh, the assistant principals and, and counselors so that the relationships stay established throughout the four years. Or we could be in this bucket of creativity where I would suggest we look at maybe, you know, I don't mean, this is not a bad word, but charter schools who are many times not held with the same constraints that we are, and may have learned something here and there. Huge advocate for public schools, I don't wanna lose sight of that. But when you take away the regulations and they can do things differently, maybe one of them has found that the graduation credits, you know, are not the end all be all and have found other ways to support kids. And maybe we can take a lesson from that and build it in. Like, I thought, it was the first time when I heard the freshman orientation class, to me was the first time I heard something creatively put out there. Especially as we have kids transition from multiple elementary districts into our system. And then if we do, if we were to do that and do it right, we would learn the kids. We, we would, the counselors will build deeper connections before they even progress further, maybe even do some interest assessments or, I don't know, like really learn about them, what kind of a learner they are, that just sets them on a completely different course for the rest of their high school career. So I'm not saying that's the right answer, but it was the first time I heard something out of the box, which I appreciated. Yeah, so taking time to look at and see what is out there, that's, uh, and maybe coming back with something, or the answer is in a year and a half, CT, you know, the, the CTE programming has to fill it, or we're filling it with internships, I love that. You know, we're not having to pull something away, but we can maybe give them credit for real world experience, which, that's massive. Like, I, I just, I see only opportunity here. We're funded, we're only limited by our creativity. I would love to see some deep research into what's being done out there. It was kind of like my point of looking at Kenosha for this, the technical train. Like, there's always someone that's running harder than just locally here in Lake County. And if we steal and look and research and call and have meetings, we can figure out what's working out there across the country and really, really do something different. So sorry to get on my soapbox, but it's time, it's time for us to shake things up a little bit here. Normally, I'm pretty quiet, well, no, I'm not always quiet, but I, but I, it's, I, there's opportunity here. It, not, so don't, please, don't put just hours for the sake of hours. That has zero, makes zero sense to me.
I have a question regarding the ninth grade, um, whatever, is it like initiation or something? I don't even know. But, um, this requirement that ninth graders would have to take. My only concern from a student's perspective is that if it's not worth anything, which I like that it's not worth anything, but if it's not worth anything, I feel like only the students who already feel like they have a path mapped out and want to see if that path is really right for them, would try hard in this class or would really take advantage of everything it has. But the students who we're trying to target here, the students who we want to put on a better path or put, not a better per se, but put on a different path, make them aware of these opportunities that we have, I feel like they might be the ones that would maybe skip past the course material, not complete it, all those sorts of things. So how would we ensure student participation in this program and what exactly would this program look like?
Can I throw two things? The one, you could make it worth credit, maybe just not as much.
Right.
So it's one credit hour versus whatever the normal course is. So it doesn't have to be none, it should be worth something. Kids are putting in time, teachers are putting in time, they should get something. Two, like, here's one way I could see like part of that class setting kids up for success. So I've had two kids now take, um, Mr. Mahoney's, uh, AP psychology.
My daughter took that too. She loved it.
It's like a rite of passage for my kids. And he's gonna stick around for my next one to hopefully take it as well. But one of the things he does is teach the psychology of studying. And my kids have taken it through junior year, and I'm like, my God, they should've had something like this two years ago, teaching kids how to study, how to, the psychology of it. Cause once they learn that, they applied those skills to the rest of their classes and carried them over in the college. So there are pieces of just, how do you learn best? You know, psycho, that could be built into a class like that, which could totally set forth. Or the relationship building that we speak so much of, maybe for some kids, it's just, again, connection with a staff member, overconnection with a staff member, whatever you wanna call it, someone that can continue that relationship beyond, but. And I think the class is just an example, so I'm not even sure it'll ever come to fruition.
Yeah, I completely understand that. I'm just saying I feel like student motivation, since it is a required class, might be a lot lower for this, rather than electives that they would choose to take.
Could be.
So could you just, Danny, would you mind just, uh, explaining a little bit about the structure of the class and how that might work?
Yeah, um, and, uh, different high schools do take different approaches to this. So some of it is usually some type of study skills, um, like Stramont was talking about, uh, psychology study skills and how to do study. Uh, some of it is building relationships with the other people in that class for that period because. because I think it was mentioned also, we pull in from a lot of different elementary schools. So they might be like, that are happening once a week. Career exploration, career interests is usually a big part of this. A lot of times, in addition to like staff mentorship, there'll be some peer mentorship. So it might be an opportunity to bring juniors and seniors over on a secondary basis so that maybe each of those advisory classes or that ninth grade onboarding class has two or three seniors or two or three juniors that they get to know throughout the year. And sometimes schools do allocate one or two days a week for that, as is the study goal. Or as freshmen, just have extra opportunities to make sure they're different types of students. Those are some examples of different things at different schools. It is just an idea, though, and I appreciate the recognition that we are learning, I think, how to think outside the box, something that we haven't been able to do for many years. And we're trying to figure out how to, how to build that muscle, innovation muscle.
Thank you.
Danny, two quick things. Well, one, Tony, great comments. Those were really good. Appreciate it. Your comment number one, Danny, how far above and beyond state requirements do we need to be? To me, I'm like, I don't even think that should be up there because we need to be aware of what's best for our students. I don't care what the state says. We're at the state requirements. We've got to do what's best for our students. And your comment number three about internship opportunities, I know I've said this many times, I'm a big fan of them. I mean, in high school, I got done at noon. I had a job. I got credit for the job. I mean, my teachers went to the job. I mean, some people don't learn in the classroom setting. You mentioned Kenosha schools. We hire a lot of Kenosha high school students, I'm very familiar with their programs. I mean, it doesn't have to be a very technical job. We hire people in our plant to learn how to run a machine. It's all about teaching kids how to have a job. We also, we also hire them in our office for more skilled jobs, but the idea is to give them an opportunity to learn about the workforce at a young age. And my last question is, Anya, what else are we missing?
Regarding what exactly?
Everything.
Oh, everything, okay. I would say internship opportunities would be really nice. I also would add, though, that right now, they are extremely competitive. And if you don't apply, like, a year or two in advance, there is no chance you will get it. So I would say if we would like to have internship opportunities as credit almost, that we should also make sure that they are available to our students and making sure that more of those are available to either specifically worn students or we just have more internship opportunities available in general. Because that's been, a lot of my friends have been trying to get jobs or internships or something like that, and they are just super, super competitive right now, especially since they are so good for college applications.
So I'm going to cut in here. I'm thinking beyond internships, I'm thinking just local jobs.
Local jobs, yeah, a very, very competitive market, yeah.
A lot of kids just need a job.
Yeah, and, and again.
Simple skills show up on time, fill out an application, how to dress, what not to say at work, how to treat a customer. I mean.
No, I completely agree.
They could be working at Walmart.
Right.
And you know what? Give them credit for that.
But I would also add that, again, it's very competitive right now. I've had several, several friends trying to go through the process of finding a job, and it is so competitive right now. Like, everyone is trying to get a job, especially for the summer, because it's like when we have actually time to do these jobs, but.
But the advantage is if the school allowed for it, you could have it during the school year, and there's a lot less competition.
Right, exactly. I would agree that that would be very helpful, especially.
They have somebody on staff who helps kids get jobs.
Right, so we have the career pathway. That's how that's going to help you guys a lot.
That would be very beneficial, yeah. I do think, though, we need to make sure that there are that number of jobs to support all these students, because I believe there would be a high interest in it. So if we want such a large interest and we have these opportunities, I just feel like we need to consider how many students would want to partake in these types of programs, and if we have the capacity to help so many students throughout the day to either like getting to these jobs or just, especially students in Oak Lane, who are under the age of sixteen, a lot of them, making sure that they have jobs as well, because Allman students have less of a hard time finding jobs, but Oak Lane students, it's really difficult. So I think not only thinking of the students who have work permits or don't even need work permits, but the students who are under the age of sixteen, since a lot of companies do not either want to hire them or they just trust Allman students more than they would Oak Lane.
And to jump on this one, I have the opportunity, for the person that we're talking about, the consultant that we're hiring, part of the responsibility could not only be to help students find jobs, but to help create jobs, help go out and recruit companies to provide jobs.
Yeah, that would be great. If we could find someone to do that, that would be amazing, yeah.
Some of us are working on it.
Lovely, as you should. That's great.
You were here in the last meeting when we talked about that, weren't you?
I was not, no.
Oh, I thought you were.
No, that would be great. I think that would actually be very beneficial. Good, good. Anything else you want my opinion on, or?
Great, thank you.
Okay, no, let me know. I'll be happy.
You sure you don't want to run for this?
I'll be placed on here. Whenever I'm placed on the schedule, I'll show up, so.
Any other comments or thoughts from the board members or anybody else in the audience? How about from you, Danny?
I was going to say, thank you. This is very, very helpful, very helpful.
If there's nothing else, then I move to adjourn the committee from the hall and reconvene the regular meeting. Second. Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
Ms. Love, if you can help me with a new consent agenda.
If you want to refresh, I did rewrite it, or?
Bam. Thank you very much. Gosh, technology is great.
I love the sound effects.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes personnel recommendations per Exhibit A, numbers one twenty-five through one thirty-three as posted, and athletic activities and volunteers per Exhibit B, numbers B two seventy through B two seven-four as posted. Approve the payment of bills dated June eleventh, twenty twenty-four in the amount of three hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-four cents, regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and the second reading and approval of district board policies and exhibits.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
Thanks. Last one, I move to adjourn this meeting. Second. Roll call.
You're ahead of me on that one, sorry. Motion by Schultz, second by Anderson. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson? Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night, have a great week. Appreciate everybody's comments.
We are playing a basketball game against Waukegan right now.